Okay. All right, good evening, everyone. Let me call this meeting to order and say welcome to Laguna Niguel City Hall. This is your city hall and this is your city council meeting. Our regular meetings are held on the first and third Tuesday of every month and the council chambers here at city hall. We'll commence this meeting today on Tuesday, March nineteenth, two thousand and nineteen. If I could have City Clerk Gomez, please call the roll.
Hey, Mayor.
Thank you.
Councilmember Reins. Councilmember Genaway. Councilmember Minigar. Mayor Protem Davies. And Mayor Jennings.
Here.
Thank you. We have a quorum.
Great, thank you. This time I'd like to ask Farshad Jahed from the Spiritual Assembly of the Bahais of Laguna Niguel to come forward for the invocation. And after that, we will have Boy Scout Super Troop Two Seven Seven Two come forward to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. If you all would, please rise.
O thou merciful God. O thou who are mighty and powerful. O thou most kind father. These servants have gathered here. Turning to thee supplicating thy threshold. Desiring thine endless bounties from thine great assurance. They have no purpose save thy good pleasure. They have no intention save service to the world of humanity. O God, make this assemblage radiant. Make the hearts merciful. Confer the bounties of the Holy Spirit. Endow them with the power from heaven. Bless them with heavenly minds. Increase their sincerity. So that with all humility and contrition they may turn to thy kingdom. And be occupied with service to the world of humanity. May each one become a radiant candle. May each one become a brilliant star. May each one become beautiful in color. And redolent of fragrance in the kingdom of God. O kind father. Confer thy blessings. Consider not our shortcomings. Filter us under thy protection. Endow us with thy providence. Thou art the powerful. Thou art the giver. Thou art the beneficent.
Thank you very much.
Ladies and gentlemen, please remain standing. Boy Scout Troop Seven Seven Two will now proceed with the colors. Color guard, advance. Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance of our nation's flag. For those in uniform and veterans, please salute. If you are not in uniform, please place your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Two. Great, thanks, guys. If you would stay put, we'll come down and say hi. Great. They did a great job, right? Some applause. There we go. Now, there's usually something special about each of the groups that come in. I think this special is the greatest difference between the tallest and the shortest. So, good job. This is great. This is also Troop Seven Seven Two, which I had the privilege of participating in their Eagle Court of Honor this last weekend. And so, a lot of familiar faces, not only on this side of the camera, but on that side of the camera. So, this is a very, very special week for you guys and it's so, we're so glad to have you here. I want to give you a chance to introduce yourselves to everyone. If you could, just tell us your name and what school you go to, what grade you're in, and pass the microphone down. Ari.
Hello, my name is Ari Parsons. I go to Dana Hills High School and I'm in eleventh grade.
My name is Gabriel Anderson. I'm a senior at Dana Hills.
My name is Kyle Sakabi. I'm a junior at Santa Margarita.
My name is Daniel and I go to Elisa Viejo Middle School and I'm in eighth grade.
My name is Alan Elves. I go to Elisa Viejo Middle School and I'm in eighth grade.
My name is Zane Foster. I go to Niguel Hills and I'm in sixth grade.
My name is Ryder Hutchinson. I go to Saint Edward the Confessor Parish School.
Hi, my name is Zachary. I go to Hidden Hills and I'm in fifth grade.
Hello, my name is Lucas and I go to Hidden Hills Elementary School and I'm in fifth grade.
My name is Ben. I go to Niguel Hills and I'm in seventh grade.
Hello, my name is Ethan Richardson. I go to Santa Margarita Catholic High School and I am a junior or in eleventh grade.
My name is Randy Williams. I'm in eighth grade and I go to Dana Point.
I'm David Clark. I won't make an "I'm an eighth grade" joke, but I have the distinct pleasure of being the scoutmaster of Troop Seven Seven Two. And I would, I would like to congratulate Ari, Gabe, Kyle. And Ethan over here, who are brand new Eagle Scouts. They reserved their rank, they received their rank on Saturday.
I'll take it. Just want to say thank you and as just a note to the scouts who aren't Eagle yet, this is a big deal. You guys have to stick it out. You promise? Yeah, please do. This will be great. On behalf of the city, also wanted to present, I gave the Eagle Scouts these on Saturday, but I want to give the troop leaders a special presentation. This is our thirtieth anniversary commemorative coin and it means a lot to us and I'm hoping it can mean a lot to you too. So, great, thank you very much. Congratulations. Thank you for all your service. Thank you so much. Do you mind if we get some pictures with you guys? You're gonna have to squeeze in a little bit like you like each other, so. That's great. Ethan, are you dismissing us? All right, let's give him a big hand. Thank you. No presentations tonight, so we can return to the dice. This brings us to public communications. Any person wishing to address the city council just needs to complete and present a gold color request to speak form to the city clerk, who's to my right. These forms are available at the counter that's located near the rear door of the council chambers. Please be aware that the time limit will be limited to three minutes for each person to speak. Equal time is given to each speaker and minutes may not be given to another speaker. If you have another person, read your comment, that's okay. And City Clerk Gomez, I have two requests to speak for them. Are there any more? Okay, let's start out with the first speaker is Shelley Tool. Ms. Tool, welcome. Thanks for coming. If you could, tell us your name and address.
I'm Shelley Tool and I live at two eight seven seven six Charriatus, here in Laguna Niguel.
Great, thank you. The microphone's yours.
Almost for all thirty years.
That's great.
I'm gonna read my, my statement because I, it's really hard for me to do this, but I can do it.
You're doing good so far.
Yeah. Mayor Jennings and members of the city council, thank you for your continued support of Dana Hills High School's annual grad night celebration and our primary fundraiser Taste of Dana. We are so grateful for the city's financial contribution. The Dana Hills Grad Night Committee's mission is to provide a safe and sober grad night celebration for the senior class. We have an annual fundraiser called Taste of Dana, which is in its twenty-third year. Taste of Dana allows us to keep costs down for the students and provide scholarships to students who might not otherwise be able to attend. I hope Laguna Niguel residents will join us at the Taste of Dana two thousand and nineteen on Thursday, April eleventh, from six to nine p.m. at the Dana Hills High School Mall. You can preorder wristbands for the low price of fifteen dollars, which provides unlimited tastes from terrific local restaurants. Visit tastefdana.com to order and preview this year's event. We will also have about a hundred amazing silent auction baskets to bid on and an amazing grand raffle offering chances to win prizes, including a VIP package for two to the Ohana Festival in Dana Point and a staycation at the Monarch Beach Resort, among other great prizes. There's plenty of free parking for this family-friendly event. We've loved having members of the city council at Taste of Dana and we hope to see you all on April eleventh. And thank you for your support for the senior, of the senior class of Dana Hills High School. Thank you very much.
It's a great event. The food's fantastic.
It really is.
Thank you for all you do.
Thank you.
It's one of our favorites.
I have some flyers that I hope to leave and I also-
If you could give them to the city clerk, that'd be fantastic.
Yes, and I also have the thank you letter for the contribution that you approved for us.
Oh, you're very welcome. Thank you so much. Our next speaker is Dennis Mulvaney. Welcome, Dennis.
Glad to be here. Another hat I wear.
Literally.
Save the date. The American Legion one hundredth anniversary celebration and fundraiser is coming up right about May nineteenth. This is going to be hosted by the American Legion Post Two Eighty-One, Sons of the American Legion Squadron Two Eighty-One, American Legion Writers' Chapter Two Eighty-One, and the American Legion Women's Auxiliary Two Eighty-One. We're gonna have wine, food, silent auction, and a raffle. This will be Sunday, May nineteenth, two thousand and nineteen, three to five p.m. At the Salt Creek Wine Company. That's in the town center. You're all welcome.
Great, thank you so much. I will definitely be attending. Glad to have it. All right, if there are no other requests to speak for them, which there are not, I will close public communications. We'll now move on to our consent calendar. Items one through seven on your agenda. I'd like to note that we'll be voting on the current version of item number three, as highlighted and provided in the red folders before the council. I'll also note that I am abstaining from item number four as it relates to a street which is adjacent to my street and was within the zone of something I have to recuse myself on. So, you will mark myself as abstaining from that one. Are there any other items that need to be pulled by the council?
Just number seven.
Number seven, okay.
I second the motion.
All right, it's moved by Mayor Protem Davies, seconded by Councilmember Minigar. Am I favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Carries unanimously. Councilwoman Reins on item number seven.
A brief comment and question. I'm glad to see that we have this item on our agenda to update us on our housing element and annual progress report. And question for Mr. Orduna on maybe just a quick overview on what we're doing to assist the region in meeting its housing needs.
Let me, before you do that, let me clarify this. You, you pulled item number seven. You meant to pull-
Oh, I meant six. I'm sorry.
Okay, so let me, let me go back and make a modified motion. Do I have a modified motion to amend our, our last vote? To approve item number seven and to pull item number six from the consent calendar. Is there a motion?
I'll second that, sorry.
So, motion moved by Mayor Protem Davies, seconded by Councilwoman Reins. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, that, that motion cancels, or carries unanimously, cancels the last vote. And now we are on to pulled item number six.
Good. Sorry about that.
Good evening, Mayor and council, to Councilmember Reins' question regarding our housing element status report to the state. Staff has been hard at work for quite a few years now on meeting the goals and priorities of our housing element. Most significantly, since the beginning of the planning period in two thousand and thirteen, staff has entitled fifteen hundred residential units, which are currently under construction in the Gateway area. And those units include both market rate and affordable dwelling units. And as a result, not only do those units meet a need in the community, they also have placed the city in a very exclusive list of cities statewide that are exempt from state streamlining requirements for permitting of new housing. So, we're in good shape at the moment. We anticipate that we will continue to have the same status as being exempt from the streamlining requirements through the end of the planning period in two thousand and twenty-one and likely through at least the midpoint of the following planning period. So, we are in great shape at the moment.
Thank you very much for that update. And with that, I'll move the item.
Great.
Second.
Okay, so I heard a second here first. So, we got moved by Councilwoman Reins, seconded by Mayor Protem Davies. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Carries unanimously. We do not have any discussion items on our agenda this evening, so we'll move on to other business and council reports. First on that list is the Economic Development Ad Hoc Committee. And I'll turn to Mayor Protem Davies for that.
Thank you so much. In regards to the meeting, I'm gonna actually just turn it back to you-
Not a problem at all.
Because I just got back from flight, so I appreciate it. Thank you.
A flight to Sacramento is discombobulating for anyone. So, we had our, our Economic Development Ad Hoc Committee that last week. It was Mayor Protem Davies' first one of those. We did a recap of all of our efforts over the last year to date. With respect to economic development, we also charted our path towards the ICSC Conference, which is the, help me with that, the International-
International Conference of Shopping Centers.
International Conference of Shopping Centers, which is coming up in, in May. Currently scheduled for the city manager and the city community development director, myself, to attend. We also got a report on all the open space and the filling space, which there are many new projects in town that are under development. We have some that I think will be very exciting when they're announced. I don't know, we can't announce that yet, Jamie Jonathan. There's one more coming that we're very excited about. And soon as we can, we'll let that out. But the state of the economic development in Laguna Niguel is extraordinarily positive right now. We have many, many fewer spaces open than we had when we started this project and the idea is to continue that effort and really to build around the city that we want. And we also discussed briefly the, the upcoming project for adjacent to city hall, which we will be having another meeting on, I think, either this coming week or the following week with the redesign. And the Mayor Protem and I are meeting with them first. And I think that the rest of the council have meetings set up to, to hear the balance of that. So, very exciting, lots of good opportunity. Our sales tax numbers are consistent. Our property taxes are way up and we are running at a high surplus at the moment. So, those are, those are all very positive indicators for how the city's doing. Moving on to council reports, and I'll start to my right. Councilwoman Reins.
Only thing I want to say is it was a pleasure participating in the joint youth committee meeting earlier today. Phil, that our city's in great hands because our youth is very engaged and thank you for having that opportunity.
Thank you. I just did come back from Sacramento, was with the ACCLC, meeting with the electeds, and the RENA numbers are great to see. Obviously, one of our main concerns is SB fifty, the housing bill by Senator Weiner. We got an opportunity to meet with him. And he did make a few changes. This bill will be going to committee next week, but a couple of the changes is, he was talking more about density, four to six stories, which is better than ten stories or twenty stories, but we'll see how that goes. If you have a transit area like we do with MetroLink, it would be half a mile from there. If any bus stops would be a quarter of a mile. We still will retain, if you really want to say this, the design demolition and we'll have local approval. But again, there is also SB four, which I believe is a wire bill. It's another housing bill. And that one gives us a little bit more local control. I was hoping when we discussed that they're gonna actually come together, kind of like they did with the transportation bill with Frazier and Bell and combine it. So, hopefully, we'll get a little bit more local control back. But this bill will probably definitely pass. But I was glad to be up there and again, great job with RENA numbers. Thank you.
And just to note, we have already written a letter of opposition to SB fifty and that's been sent out to the relevant agencies. So, Councilwoman Genaway.
At the, prior to our city council meeting, there was a video playing and just to let everyone know, that was a training video from our, one of our adopted military units, the Marines One Four. So, they sent that to us to show us some of their training. And, you know, we are just so proud of them and what they do and also for their families that support them. Thank you also to all the generous Laguna Niguel residents who stopped by the Military Support Committee's collection table at Walmart this weekend. We're collecting items for the baby shower. So, we have two of our units that will be coming back very soon. And after that, we expect lots of bundles of babies. So, thank you Laguna Niguel for your generous support of our adopted military units. Prior to this meeting, we did have our joint meeting with the youth committee and I continue to be amazed by them and just so proud of the work that they are doing in reaching out to the youth in our city. They've had pizza with police. Now, they are starting intergenerational programming. Last Saturday, they had songs for seniors where some of our high school students went to a senior living home and played music. Some of them sang, some played guitar, some played piano, violin. It was amazing and the seniors absolutely loved it. So, we look forward to having more of that. One topic that is of great concern and our teens initiated the discussion on this was the mental health of teens. And we know the tragedies that have taken place in our community. So, last week, the mayor and I attended a fundraiser for a group of parents that have come together, the Wellness Prevention Center, and are trying to provide venues and space for teens to come together and to talk and to express any concerns that they may have. So, we look forward to collaborating with our youth on this because we need to hear what is it that they feel that their peers need and also working with the parents who are trying to establish the Wellness Prevention Center at one of our high schools. And I just encourage everyone to connect with your kids and connect by disconnecting. Disconnect your phone, disconnect your Wi-Fi, spend some time on interpersonal communications. And that goes a long way. Sometimes, you know, parents are busy and our teens are busy and, but sometimes they just need some, just some good old-fashioned conversation. And let them drive the conversation. Spend some time to hear what they have to say. April first, the nomination period for Laguna Niguel Citizen of the Year opens up. Nominations will be expected during the month of April. This is an activity of the service organizations in our city. It's purely driven by the volunteers. It is not a city activity, but the city is gracious enough that in recognition of all that volunteers have done in our city to allow us to make the nomination forums available at different sites throughout the city and on the city website. So, think of those people who have made Laguna Niguel a better place for all of us to live and work through their volunteer efforts. And the nomination period is April first through the thirtieth. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Minigar.
Since we're not gonna break the record, so I'm gonna just go over a few items.
You can now self-actualize.
All right. I'm cooperating.
Yeah, no, you're good. Love it.
Okay, I can take my time like in the Congress. Okay. Okay, honored and humbled to be appointed by the President of Southern California Association of Governments from thirty-four cities of Orange County to be on the nominating committee. They typically pick one from each county. There are six counties and one hundred and ninety-one cities. We are going to be dominating the future leaders for Southern California within the six counties. While I attended the SCAGS meeting, Executive Committee, Transportation Committee, Regional Council Committees, just a few quick items of interest to our city and our city council. Number one is that during the past year, between five to six thousand shopping centers and anchor stores have been closed in America. Having reported to us in the Regional Council of Southern California, this is pretty much alarming. It gives us some kind of indication that when we think about future developments, future entities, future shopping centers, it gives us the guidance that that sector of the business is not that much promising. Number one. Number two, based on the industry's representatives that they typically report on a monthly basis to us, Amazon is taking over a lot of those sectors and that's very alarming to other midsize and small-sized businesses. And also, within the construction industry, the, because the cost went up between seven to eight percent last year, that indicates that the market is getting tighter. And last but not least, according to Mr. Lewis, who's the president of Lewis Homes of the U.S., he reported that in the last quarter, which is the fourth quarter of two thousand and eighteen, he said the building industry had tanked because of the price cuts. They build homes all over the U.S. and he was saying that that's the indication and that's the way he would see the future, the near future, to be trending. Other highlights of special interest, let's see, I attended the Joint Board's meeting of TCA and I believe the report has been transmitted to the Director of Public Works. They gave me the preview before blessing it so that we may have, maybe we can come up with a mutual presentation on the status of all the toll road facilities in, in Orange County, you know, which, as you know, the toll roads operate about fifty-one miles of the infrastructure system that we can go over all those highlights and what's cooking and basically for our citizens to know what's going on within the Transportation Corridor Agency. I also attended the Orange County Government Leaders' Prayers Breakfast in Irvine and a bunch of other ones. And last but not least, I had a meeting with some potential developers for the Ziggurat Building. The federal government representatives, to be specific, the GSA rep, the lady was extremely cooperative and I didn't know that she lives in our beautiful city. The minute that she heard that, you know, I'm meeting with those potential developers for the potential proposal for the future of, you know, maybe coming up with a mixed-use facility, they were cooperating with us and that remains to be seen to what extent their, their potential plans would be appealing to the GSA in Washington, D.C. And they have some needs, but I didn't realize that the federal building is almost at ninety-five percent capacity. That means it's full. I was under the impression that they have a lot of different, you know, facility that, facilities that don't have that many employees. But apparently, they're the number one employer in this city. So, with that said, we do look forward to work with GSA and the federal government for any potential dynamic plans as long as it would conform and comply with our planning requirements and the taste of the people and the city council that- and comply with our planning requirements and the taste of the people and the city council that have had in this great city. With that, I yield my time to you.
Well done, my friend. Thank you very much for the comments on the Ziggurat. I'll also say that there's also other discussions going on in that regard. I definitely want to make sure that we loop those in together, so that we're not double-tasking that effort. But I appreciate you bringing it to our attention. This past week, we had the first of the year of the mayor's business walk. I had the opportunity to attend with members of the Chamber of Commerce, members of Community Development Department, members from Molten Niguel Water, and we went to all the shops at the corner of La Paz and Eliso Creek, in the Eliso Village Shopping Center. I had unbelievable responses, fantastic. You know, the businesses couldn't believe that we were there, first of all, and they were very appreciative, and we got lots of photos, pushed those all out on social media, as did the chamber, so we're planning more of those, and I think it went very well. Want to thank Deputy City Manager Debbie Bell for assisting and helping to put that together with the chamber. I think it went great, and I definitely encourage that we keep doing it. Had a great Parks and Rec meeting last night. I don't normally talk about the Parks and Rec, but we approved the new facilities for Chaparosa Park, which is, I think they're calling it Fort Chaparosa, and it's a very neat play facility, and it's gonna be one of the premier ones in town, I can assure, and I was very happy to see that. I had, I mentioned it earlier, but I had the privilege of attending the Court of Honor for the Eagle Scouts for Troop 772, and that is such a moving ceremony, and such a great thing for some very deserving kids. We are so fortunate to have so many Eagle Scouts coming out of Laguna Niguel. I'd love to have a full count on that, but you guys were great. I loved the ceremony, and it's a tremendous amount of work, and I was very pleased to be part of that. So, thanks very much for the invitation, guys, and thanks for all the hard work you did. Had the privilege this morning to participate in the, Agewell Senior Services has a national mayor's Meals on Wheels program. So, got to go out with them and deliver the meals to some seniors, and just, as I say, it's one of my favorite, favorite days of getting to be mayor. Really was very fulfilling, and they're so appreciative and such amazing people. I was blown away by the people that we met. So, a great, great time. With that, that's all I had. Thank you very much. We'll go around the room and start with Chief McDaniel.
Nothing tonight, mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Director Erlinson, nothing. City Attorney, yes?
Nothing to report. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Chief Contreras, nothing? Well done, sir. Director O'Duna?
Just one quick announcement. Last week, we announced the grand opening of the Marshals at the Laguna Niguel Center. This week, we are announcing the grand opening of Alta Beauty, which will be holding their grand opening Friday, March 29th through Sunday, March 31st. And they will be giving away treats to the first 100 customers. So, come out and support your local businesses.
That's great. Alta's right next to Marshals, is it?
That is correct, yes.
Great, yeah. City Clerk Gomez? Great, thank you. Director Giglio?
Thank you, mayor. There's still time to register for the Laguna Niguel Senior Games. They're gonna be at March 29th through 31st. Everyone over the age of 55 is eligible. And the opening ceremony is Friday, March 29th at 6:00 p.m. at Sea Country Center, and it is open to everybody, even if you're not participating in the games. And Clyde Wright, the former Angels pitcher, will be the keynote speaker. For more information, go to the city website, cityoflagunaniguel.org. The High School Job and College Fair, organized by the Laguna Niguel Youth Committee, is Saturday, March 30th, from 10:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. here at City Hall. This free event will have, we have 22 confirmed employers, 20 confirmed universities and trade schools, and we're getting more participants every day. We're also gonna have a short session on how to interview and how to dress for success, and that's always really popular. And last note, Parks and Rec is recruiting for seasonal summer positions. Interested applicants can go to cityoflagunaniguel.org for information about that and to apply.
Thank you very much. Debbie City, Deputy City Manager, nothing. Oh, nothing. Well, well done. City Manager Ridge?
Honorable members and councilmembers, I just have one item. I want to announce that they're doing a John Wayne Airport Town Hall meeting in Newport Beach. It's being sponsored by County Supervisor Michelle Still and the mayor of Newport Beach, Mayor Dixon. And they're gonna be discussing flight paths, flight noise, and also the John Wayne's General Aviation Improvement Plan. It is on April 6th. It's a Saturday, and it's being held from 10:00 to noon, and it will be at the Community Room at the Newport Beach Civic Center.
And I've indicated my intention to attend at that, and so we can have at least one other person from the city council attend, so if you all check your schedules, please let me know. Anything else? With that, we are, thank you very much, everybody. We are adjourned at 7:31.